... which is why I'm here this evening. In overview, we have been developing these design standards that would apply to the public realm in all four of our town centers. And what we've tried to do here is take a very comprehensive approach of advancing all of our goals, not just looking at it from a mobility or from a public realm or a narrow perspective, but trying to be very comprehensive about it and look at those designs that would advance as many of our goals as possible. So here we have the areas where the new standards apply, the four town centers, and these have certain things in common. Obviously, a diversity of land uses, numerous destinations available within a relatively small area, and thus shorter travel distances. The areas are relatively flat compared to other parts of Burnaby. There's good transit service with Skytrain and extensive bus coverage as well. And these factors together make these ideal locations for travel by walking, cycling, and transit. So here we have the street. This particular street is from ancient Pompeii. It's 2,000 years old, and what I find interesting about it is that it is immediately recognizable as a street. We haven't really advanced that far in our designs in the last 2,000 years. But what we wanted to do was go back to first principles and look at the various components of the street and see how each component can work with the others to advance our overall goals for the town centers. In doing that work, we had a strong policy foundation to rely on, and so here we have a sampling of some of those documents, the official community plan, the three sustainability strategies, the four town center plans, the transportation plan, and so on. Each of these provided input on what we're trying to do with our streets and in particular in the town centers. The work that we did was done within the rezoning process. As you know, we have a number of significant developments coming through the rezoning process in the town centers, and that provided an excellent testing ground by bringing forward these ideas, having them reviewed by the development community, by the public, by this council. And what we were doing was bringing in ideas from around the world, looking at some of the best practices in other jurisdictions, and seeing how we could best incorporate them into the circumstances that we have in our town centers. So with that as background, here's an example of a four or a six-lane street and how we would apply those standards and what it would look like. And the only difference between the four and the six-lane street is in the width of some of the elements, but it's the same components in the same places, plus of course an additional lane in each direction on the street. And so starting at the building face, we have the building setback zone, and this is an area on private land that can be used for sort of semi-private or semi-public functions such as in this case, some outdoor seating, or there could be retail displays in an area like this. These in the case of a commercial setting. If it's a residential setting, then we would see landscaping that, and we're already starting to see these elements coming in to beautify the public realm and make it as attractive as possible. Next inward, we have the walking zone, so we have a wider, more generous sidewalk that is further separated from traffic than in our traditional street designs. It has a saw-cut concrete surface, which means that if you're in a wheelchair or a stroller, it's a smoother surface. You don't have that bump every couple of meters as you go over the joints. So much more comfortable and feeling of being, as I say, further from traffic and more ease of emissions. Next in, we have the rain gardens, and here we see one on Low Heat Highway, and you see the very nice plantings that are in this area. Not as obvious in the photograph, we also have a significant tree in each of these rain gardens. You can see that in the overview diagram in the background. And so we're getting both attractive landscaping right at ground level as well as a tree that's contributing to a canopy over the street and providing shade and comfort for people using the street. The rain gardens also provide an environmental benefit in terms of water quality. Water runoff flows through the rain garden and is filtered by the plants in the rain garden and comes out cleaner than it otherwise would. And the rain garden also slows the movement of water, and so it's not being piped directly into our streams and causing more erosion. It's being slowed over time so that the peak flows are lower and we get less erosion downstream. Here's an example of some of the finer details that go into the design, in this case some pavers that go around the rain garden that provide a border visually highlighting the rain garden, adding a little more interest compared to just a plain concrete surface. The rain gardens also have these crossings that allow people to get across, and that serves a number of functions. First of all, if you're in the building and you need to get to a parked car, it allows you to get across the rain garden, get to the car. It also provides the perfect place for street furniture, because here you have a place, it's not blocking the sidewalk or anything else, and so the full width of the sidewalk is preserved for people moving about, and you have a nice place a little bit out of that flow where you can sit, have a conversation with people, and relax. Next in, the cycling zone, and so here we have a bike path separated from cars, separated from pedestrians, and this provides a facility for cyclists of all abilities. Next in, we have the front boulevard. Here we have now the second row of street trees, adding to the row of street trees in the rain gardens, and then pavers at ground level to add some color and some visual interest. Also provides the place where you'd have your light fixtures as seen here, or parking meters or other things of that nature. Here's an example of some of the new light fixtures. These ones on Beresford illustrate that we're not just lighting the street, we're also illuminating the pedestrian area, and we're doing it in a way that is itself attractive and interesting. Now we look at how the same principles and ideas and concepts are applied on a narrower street, a two-lane street, again in our town centers. Same components, some of them moved around a little bit, but all the same ideas are present here. One of the things that's different on a two-lane street is that the curb lane, the outside, is always for parking. On a multi-lane street, parking could be banned at peak times, but not on the two-lane streets. And so here we're showing parking with a different surface treatment that visually distinguishes the parking area from the travel area, helps to visually narrow the street, hopefully encourages slightly slower travel speeds. Continuing with that theme, the rain garden is now moved to the front boulevard area and extends out into the parking area as well. This brings the trees out closer to the street, again giving a narrower feel to the street, encouraging lower speeds and increasing the attractiveness of the whole street. Again, you get the environmental benefits of the rain garden. Here's another example of lighting. In this case, the pedestrian lighting is on the same pole as the street lighting, just mounted on the back side of the pole. Then when we take those same ideas and see how they apply at an intersection, what happens here? You can see that the rain garden is stopped at the intersection, and in addition, the bike path is brought out closer to traffic, and these two things together provide a very nice area at the corner reserved for pedestrians. So we call this a mini plaza, and you can see the photograph showing one example of how it can be done and be very attractive, provides more space just for chatting with people, waiting for the light to change, that sort of thing. Here's another example of how the design improves on accessibility. In most, in traditional street designs, if you're in a wheelchair and you're crossing the curb, you're probably doing it at about a 45-degree angle. The curb, the curb is actually curved at this location, and you're sort of bumping across at an awkward angle. In this design, you're going directly straight across. It's a much smoother movement that isn't likely to try and skew you and push you sideways when you're rolling across this in a wheelchair. Here's an example of public art, and it shows one of the places where public art can be incorporated into the design, at the ends of the rain gardens, either at the corner or where you see the street furniture on the rain garden crossing mid-block. Another opportunity for public art is back in the building setback zone, and again, art that is on private land but visually accessible from the street, adding to the quality of the street experience. Here's how the design modifies if there's a bus stop, and here's our little bus pulling into the stop. And what you see here is we've interrupted the rain garden for a short distance and used that space to push the bike path further back away from the street, and that's freed up space for a very generous area for boarding and the lighting from the bus without conflicting with any other modes, provides a nice place for the city of Burnaby bus shelters. This photo illustrates how while it is a set of standard designs, it can also be customized for specific situations. And so in this case, we have a development off the screen to the right, and some of the surface treatments, the paving treatments for that development have been extended out onto the sidewalk and again add some visual interest and linkage in with the adjoining development. Another example of something that's not part of the standard but would be used from time to time is a different style of seating, and here it's more of a bar stool kind of seat, and it's easily set up for people who are having a coffee or we've seen people have like impromptu meetings out here, set a couple of documents in front, crowd around, have a discussion. And again, the choice of color brightens up the neighborhood and adds some interest. So you put all those items together, and what you end up with is a more attractive and interesting street, interesting street that really supports and accentuates the value of the development and the community and the neighborhood around it. Just to go over some of the principles that we incorporated in coming up with these designs, first of all, the notion of recreating the living room, the idea that the street is a public space where you can interact, bump into people on an impromptu basis, have a little conversation. Wanted them to be as attractive and interesting as possible. The notion of complete streets, streets that are safe and comfortable regardless of mode, age, ability, or gender, is reflected in all the designs, really emphasizing the neighborhood, focusing on the street as a place to be rather than as a place to pass through. Hence, the environment, as we've talked about, obviously in terms of the rain gardens, but also in creating nicer spaces for pedestrians and cyclists, we're encouraging active forms of transportation if we have emissions. Proving access to local businesses, obviously by increasing the desirability of the public realm in front of those businesses. And using standards, we didn't want to reinvent the concept for every different development. We wanted some uniformity, something that could be applied cost-effectively, and so coming up with standards that can be applied consistently across the town centers. Most of the funding for this is through development and through the development that is occurring in those town centers, and so the construction work is done by the developer and is committed to through the rezoning process. In addition, we are receiving a deposit for ongoing maintenance of those facilities to cover the additional maintenance primarily associated with the landscaping, with the additional landscaping care in the rain gardens. A lot of community benefits that arise from these designs, as noted, we have opportunity for a more active population and the improved health that goes with that. Cleaner stormwater, gentler flows in our streams, more opportunities to socialize whether on a planned or an informal, impromptu basis. We're supporting local businesses by making these streets as desirable as we possibly can. Accessibility features such as the choice of surface materials, the design in this case of the curb, to make them as easy to use as possible with a wheelchair. Community identity, these are features that only apply in the town centers, and so they really set them apart from other parts of Burnaby and certainly from other cities where you really don't see this sort of integrated design all occurring across an entire neighborhood. Obviously, we want the safety and comfort that comes with the quality public realm, separation from traffic, the comfort of the additional trees, the shade that comes from that, worked into all components of the design. Public art, again, an opportunity to improve the attractiveness and interest of these public spaces, beautification with a variety of species, you can see just a variety of colors even in this one rain garden here. So to wrap it all up, we're working on creating better streets in support of better neighborhoods, and we have a webpage that goes into more detail for anyone who's interested in that, burnaby.ca/town-center-streets. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramsey, and I don't know, are there any questions from members of council? Counselor Calendino?
I think we've seen this before, and we commented how wonderful this new streetscape was in the town centers, and I also commented that I'm temporarily living in an apartment building which is obviously having the advantage of having that streetscape just half a block up. And I have to say that it is very beautiful, very pleasant, very inviting for people to actually use a sidewalk, and if I had to go to the Skytrain or I have to go to Brentwood, it was easy before to take the car and go, but because it's a lovely area to walk on, I prefer now to be walking on that landscaped street with, you know, with greenery, with the swales or the rain gardens and the bikes separated from the pedestrians. So I think, I think it's a great advantage to have that kind of design for streetscapes in our town centers, and if we could expand it to all the other neighborhoods, but we don't have the space in the streets, but I think it's, it is the way to go. It makes the city much more beautiful, much more inviting for people to walk on. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Ramsey. We really appreciate it, and it's always nice to let the public see the hard work that's going on behind the scenes in working with our developers to make sure that our communities are people-friendly and, you know, I, sometimes people have to wait until these developments come along to see the results, but it's nice to get a preview, able to see what we're working for and what we're trying to achieve during the course of these developments, because it often doesn't come out in the plans or the public hearings, but this is a snapshot of some of the ways in which we're going to be improving the city. And you can get an example, I think, up on Beresford or down in Brentwood of the way these developments are shaping up, and I think they really are making a difference. So thank you very much. Please compliment your staff, the great work they're doing. All right, moving on to proclamations, and the first proclamation is going to be read by Counselor Kang.
Thank you, worship. From the Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby, proclamation Mitochondrial Disease Awareness Week. Whereas at least one in 200 people harbors a genetic mutation that can lead to mitochondrial disease in them or their children, and whereas mitochondrial disease is among the most common adult form of inherited neurological disorders affecting one in 4,300, and whereas research has consistently shown that mitochondrial dysfunction is at the core of many very common illnesses of adulthood, including Alzheimer's dementia, Parkinson's disease, diabetes, hypertension, heart disease, osteoporosis, cancer, and even the aging process itself. And whereas the overall disease burden is unknown but is significant, resulting in substantial direct and indirect healthcare costs to the patient and society as a whole, and whereas there are few effective treatments and no known cure, and whereas thousands of Canadians suffer from this debilitating and often fatal disease, and whereas Mitocanada Foundation through greater public awareness seeks to promote early diagnosis, education, and treatment of mitochondrial disorders. Now therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim the week of September 20th to 26th, 2015, as Mitochondrial Disease Awareness Week in the City of Burnaby. Thank you, worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Kang, and that was a real test, that proclamation.
It was, I thought you did it to him on purpose.
Exactly. Your public speaking is excellent. Thank you. And I am, I'm given the privilege of being able to present the frame proclamation to Celia McGrath, a Burnaby resident. She's going to be accepting on behalf of the Mitochondrial Disease Awareness Week, on behalf of Mitocanada, so I'm going to bring it down, and I know we're going to get a photo taken. Is Celia here with us? Come on up front, Celia. was thanking me for not giving him that proclamation this week. Thank you. And now I have a proclamation read by Counselor Calendino.
Thank you. This one is much more known than the previous one because it is about Terry Foxman. So from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby, the proclamation on Terry Foxman. Whereas Terry Fox quietly began his Marathon of Hope on April 12th, 1980, in St. John's, Newfoundland, to increase the Canadian people's awareness of cancer and to raise funds for research to find a cure. And whereas Terry Fox, at the age of 21, and having had a leg amputated due to bone cancer, endeavored to run across Canada, covering 5,373 kilometers over 143 days, the equivalent to a 42-kilometer marathon each day, until he was forced to stop due to a recurrence of cancer. And whereas, in the past 34 years, including Terry's Marathon of Hope, worldwide events in Terry's name have raised over $650 million for cancer research, making it one of the largest cancer research funding events in the world. And whereas, many lives have been saved and countless lives have been made better through discoveries that were made possible because of cancer research funding. And whereas, the citizens of Burnaby have shown support for this research by coordinating, volunteering for, and participating in our local Terry Fox Run, and in the past 10 years have raised over $140,000 for the Terry Fox Foundation at the Central Park event. And whereas, there will be three Terry Fox events in Burnaby in September, including the 35th Annual Burnaby Terry Fox Run on Sunday, 20th of September, 2015, which will continue the legacy of a brave Canadian who set out to make a difference as symbol for all British Colombians of hope, courage, and determination in the fight against cancer. And now therefore, I, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2015, as Terry Fox Month in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you, Counselor Calendino. Before we get on to our official business, I also wanted to make an announcement about the return to Stage Two of the Water Shortage Response Plan as of September 9. Many of you will know that last Wednesday, Metro Vancouver area returned to Stage Two of the Water Shortage Response Plan. Even though that means that lawn sprinkling restrictions are in effect, it is no longer required that citizens hand water only. Stage Two regulations permit lawn sprinkling at the following times. Residential lawn sprinkling is allowed even-numbered addresses Monday mornings only, 4:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Odd-numbered addresses Thursday mornings only, 4:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Non-residential lawn sprinkling is allowed on even-numbered addresses Wednesday mornings only, 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. Odd-numbered addresses Tuesday mornings only, 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. I also want to, on behalf of Council Kang, all of our citizens for respecting these Stage Three watering restrictions, even though for some it meant hours of standing in the hot sun to hand-water gardens and plants and going for weeks in an unwashed car. And I know that many of us lost a few plants this summer, certainly the city did, because of the restrictions and the very dry conditions. As you know, the restrictions were critical to ensure preservation of our drinking water. We sincerely appreciate your efforts to ensure we meet all of our requirements from Metro Vancouver. For anyone who would like more details about exactly what Stage Two restrictions require, full information is on the city website at www.burnaby.ca. Thank you again. Now, minutes. A motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on August the 24th, 2015?
No.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Motion to adopt the minutes of the public hearing held on August 25th, 2015?
No.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. A motion to hear, moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, carried. And the delegation is Mr. Nikita Visniak in regard to 6435 Marine Drive. Please come forward, sir. All right, and Mr. Visniak, you're here to address the report that's contained at item one in the manager's report of 6435 Marine Drive, Burnaby, and this is a request for a resolution to file a notice in the Land Title Office pursuant to Section 57 of the Community Charter.
Yep. Am I allowed to bring up other stuff too, or not? Is that, or can I only talk about that one topic?
That's what you indicated you would talk about in your, your letter to us.
Well, I was going to ask for water metering for Burnaby, would be a nice thing. I was going to ask for beekeeping to be allowed on agricultural land properties, and ask for goats and horses. Okay, basically with my, okay, so this is the place that we purchased, 6435 Marine Drive, 9th Avenue, in 2005. You can look at the picture there, it is a, whatever, a standard bungalow, and if you look at the back, you can see a two-story building in the back that is a barn behind the property right there. That existed before I was probably born, and it was one of the reasons we purchased the place was because I see potential as a workshop and other office space there as well. Here's a survey from 1993, I think it was 1993, that shows the prior existence of that barn. Um, yeah. Basically, we had a complaint from one of our neighbors, and the neighbor complaint came in, and the city told us that we had three choices. The choices were to tear the barn down, get permits for the barn, or there was the potential to buy some of the city right of way. My wife didn't want to move, and I mean, the standard adage, if happy wife is a happy life, that's what you, that's what you try and do. So we tried to pursue all options for that region. I mean, even if we could have purchased two or three feet, that would have made a difference to save a little bit more of the building, or even if you look at the north side of the property, you can see that the building was built whenever it was, it's about three feet over onto the city right of way as well. One of the other issues that came up was there was a, I'll use it in quotes, retaining wall. It was cement rubble that was there again since forever, so what we did is we had a community group event to go ahead and clear that area up, and what we did is you can see the kids in the lower right picture right there, and you can see the slope has been returned to the natural slope. So, you know, try and meet the city requirements. And then, yes, meet my neighbor. So you can see there's a picture of the neighbor's barn that's torn down, you can see it being rebuilt, you can see the saws and everything set up, and then you can see this neighbor digging into that. And then you can see this neighbor digging into that city right-of-way, creating instability into that area. Also, that building is non-permitted in the back, and they had as well that he built. And the result of this was that the city came in and put up some lock walks into that area after I thought I had met the requirements for, and returning the city back, the city's slope back to a normal slope. What I'm going to ask is, number one, that it be released, we've basically sold the lot now, and the new developer has given a letter to Leon Goss in engineering that they received that basically says, on all aspects, the lot was sold as-is. So that has been addressed, but my concern is the fact that, if I'm observing this from the outside, it looks like I can go ahead and dig into city property, get caught at it, and then the city's going to pay for that repair into that area, and I'm not going to have any repercussions around that. What I'm asking here as well would be the potential for the city to sell this 9th Avenue right-of-way. It's essentially a duplex lot, there are no utilities or anything on the lot. The previous owners to the current owner were told that they weren't allowed to rebuild their garage at the back because the city is trying to get access off of the front of the avenue, off the front of Marine Drive and not off of the back. The thing I was going to ask for too was for staff to hire more bylaw enforcement officers to become a building mayor at some point.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Visniak, for your presentation, and the, I wasn't quite sure if you'd addressed the report that we're dealing with. Don't want to make any comments on the report?
What specifically?
That is the registration on title in regard to the bylaw infractions.
I guess I would like them removed. Is that what I'm supposed to ask? I don't know.
No, is it either you remove the items that infringe the bylaw, or we have to put a notice on your title of the infringement, and then have to have the structures removed?
Yeah, but we've already taken care of that with a letter through. Ira is well aware of that, and we have a set date to do that.
Right, Mr. Goss, are you, you've received this letter, but we've been dealing with this matter, I think, for a year now, haven't we?
Yes, that's right, Worship. The letter from the new owner is a commitment, he's going to demolish all of those buildings, including the current house. He's going to, his intent is to construct a duplex. What I have said from engineering's perspective is that we are happy enough to wait for the demolition of the rest of the building, so that he doesn't have to do it in two stages, as long as there's not a long delay in application for the permits from planning to demolish, right? So that is the current state that we're in. I can't say that the property hasn't transferred yet, though. I mean, I've seen the purchase agreement, and I think it was the end of October.
October 15th is the transfer date. And I mean, it's still pending the time that it takes for city permits to come through and everything for demolition as well, right?
Correct. And so I've said that pending, of course, in getting a demolition permit, we're willing to wait for the infractions to be removed along with the rest of the building before he constructs a duplex.
All right. Bottom line is, though, that there hasn't been a sale of the property at this point. We're looking to register on title, Madam Solicitor, so would your advice be that we continue to register on title, and then, once the demolition has been completed, it can be withdrawn from title? Right, so you've heard the advice from our solicitor. Our engineer has indicated that if, in fact, the purchaser goes ahead with demolition in a timely way, we won't need to come in and do the work, it can be done by the new owner. But we will be registering the, on the land title, and then subsequently removing that when the demolition is completed.
That I understand.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Visniak. Appreciate you being here tonight. All right. Correspondence. Motion received, the correspondence? Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. And the correspondence is a request for temporary signage for the Christmas pottery show. Back in the motion. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. A motion resolved into a committee of the whole to consider report. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. The clerk's report is the first, a certificate of sufficiency.
The recommendations, I have one second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to the city manager's report. Item One is, I spoke about it earlier, 6435 Marine Drive, Burnaby, and this is a resolution to file notice in the land title office pursuant to Section 57 of the community charter. Been moved and seconded, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Similarly, in regard to 8708 Royal Oak Avenue in Burnaby. This is again a request to file a notice in the land title office pursuant to Section 57 of the community charter. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item Three. This is a strata title application, 7379 Stride Avenue. Counselor Volco.
I'm not going to belabor this, but I've looked at a lot of these over the years, and this is the first one that I can recall, that on a duplex, the strata titling is being done by a numbered company. And I'm familiar with major multifamilies and all of that, but without going too deep into this, I was wondering if the planner could either send me a memo in regards to this? Like, what is the process, and what is the purpose of, on a duplex, strata-titing a duplex that it's a numbered company? I just want to familiarize myself with this process. As I say, I don't know if there's tax implications to it, or what exactly the purpose of numbering a company for a duplex construction is. And secondly, if it's possible to determine whether we can find out who the principals are behind, not just this numbered company, but any numbered company. I've been told that apparently there was a change in legislation that one can't search out principals behind numbered companies, so if that's the case, in the memo, if it would address that. But in particular, on this one, as I say, I've, this is probably the first one I can recall when it comes to a minor thing like a duplex, why someone would put a numbered company in place in order to strata-title a duplex. Whatever the process is, if, as I say, tax implications, or whether it's tax avoidance issues, and not evasion, avoidance. So if I can perhaps just learn a little more about the process, I'd appreciate it.
Is there a simple answer you can give, Mr. Pelche, or would you like? Have we got a speaker on there? Start over. Yeah. Side of the duplex. So it would probably be an advantage to maintain it under one title until the point you were actually going to sell it. If you could just put that in the memo, and then maybe ask the city solicitor as to how difficult it is to get access to corporate directors in the modern day and age, and whether or not numbered company can easily look for the directors of those companies. All right, so we'll give you a memo on that, and it can be circulated to the other members of council. Thank you. I don't think we need a motion. We'll just do it as a, as courtesy. Yeah. Yeah, you ready for the motion? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. So we're not holding it up, we're just getting the questions answered. Item Four is building permit tabulation, and this provides information on the construction activity from August 1st to August 31st, and it continues to, I guess now we're moving into a record year, are we? Close to, we're very high construction. Great, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. This is the Kensington Avenue overpass, and this is Expansion Joint Replacement Project, and the award of a construction contract. Questions called? We should be able to do this just a little quicker. All right, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item Six. This is to obtain council approval to award a contract for the electrical maintenance and repair services of city-owned buildings and facilities. Questions called? All those in favor, opposed, carried. This is to obtain council approval to increase the existing contract with Honeywell Limited for HVAC systems maintenance and repair services. Questions called? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. This is the Burnaby Fire Department, 2014 Annual Report, and this details the activities of our fire department over 2014, and I'm sure council would join me in commending our fire department for doing an excellent job, continuing to look after the public safety in a very effective way, and doing more above and beyond the call of duty through their charitable society to assist many people in our community. So congratulations to the fire department on another very effective year of looking after our fire services. Questions called? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. A motion, the committee rise and report? Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Motion that the reporter of the committee be adopted? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to bylaws. And Counselor McNally, you're reading the bylaws.
Bylaw 13503 and 13504 now be introduced and read for the first time.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
The first, second, and third readings, I move the bylaws 13505, 13506, 13507, 13508, 13509, 135010, 13511, 13512, 13513, 13514, 13515, 13516 now be introduced and read three times.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
For second reading, I move the bylaw 13499 now be read a second time.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none. Okay, Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to speak briefly to this. This is, if I'm correct, Tower Number Three at Brentwood, and indicate that I was supporting this, but I also wanted, for council, in, you were, Counselor Volco, and I took the opportunity to go over to Brentwood and have the folks from Shape and the construction company, et cetera, have us have a close-up look at what's going on on the corner there, and the size of the hole in the ground, which is gradually filling up, and all of the activity that's going around the center. And still, the mall seems pretty busy, right? So I wanted to thank them for having that opportunity, and I'd encourage other members of council to go and, you know, do the same and have a look at it. But what really impressed me, and what we, both Counselor Volco and I expressed to the developer, was that they should be providing us with more specific information about the economic impact of just the construction and building of that for our city. On that particular day that we were there, there was 194 men, I think they're mostly men, working down, working down in that hole in the construction area. That's just the guys working on the rebar and the concrete and the building, and, you know, we're still at the second level of the parquet. And that doesn't count all the cement trucks that are coming in, and that doesn't count all the dump trucks that are still taking soil out of that hole in the ground, right? And so to say nothing of the materials, et cetera, et cetera, and the economic impact that that's having, and people don't look at it that way. And so I think, you know, that's one of the things about these major redevelopments, is that they're contributing to our community in many ways, even before they get out of the ground. So I just wanted to share that little bit of information with council, and hopefully Shape will take our advice and let us know about some of the other aspects of what that development will mean for providing jobs in our community, both through construction and then eventually when the commercial phase gets going.
Those are high-quality jobs, and as, I've seen the hole, and that is a really deep hole that they're putting in in Burnaby. In fact, I think I had a delegation from China that came through that way. It's incredible.
What's very cool is, if you go up to the food court, even though they chopped the front of the building off, if you haven't been there, you can stand at the big plate glass windows and look straight down into the pit, so to speak. So it's really, for those people who used to go around looking through the holes and fences at major construction sites, you have a panoramic view of this one from the food court at Brentwood, so it's very cool.
I heard they wanted to take you and Counselor Volco down to the bottom, but you wouldn't go.
That's correct, I would not.
Pleased you wouldn't come back, Nick? Anyway, I'm glad you had the chance to go out and have a look at it, and again, I think oftentimes, you know, when we're out there talking about job creation, we often look to commodities projects and those kind of things, and large numbers are quoted. But in fact, very large numbers of employees are brought into the construction of these major developments, and it's work that goes on literally for decades. And high-quality jobs, family-supporting jobs, and it should be recognized. And I think the development community should do more to pat itself on the back for creating those jobs, because often people don't recognize what a contribution it is to the economy.
What was interesting is there was, while we were standing and looking through the window out with our hard hats and safety vests on, two young men came across from the food court and asked us, obviously, do you have something to do with what's going on in the construction? And they asked us just how much those guys that run the cranes, the three cranes that are operating right now, get paid, because they said there wasn't enough money in the universe for them to do that job. And then as we were going down, looking more closely, the guys were climbing down the stairs that they climb up and down every day to get out of the cranes, and then after they get to the bottom, then they have to climb back up the stairs to get out of the hole in the ground. So it just doesn't seem fair.
Wait until they're 40 or 50 stories, huh?
Well, they can kick the elevator halfway, but it's still about eight stories.
Looking down gets worse, though. I, yeah, again, it's quite an accomplishment, you know, the modern building techniques that allow us to do something that would have been an impossible dream only decades ago. So it is really something. All right, with that, is there anything else in regard to the rezonings? You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
3410 now be considered and read a third time.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
Third reading, reconsideration, and final adoption, I move the bylaws 13383 and 13495 now be read a third time, reconsidered.
That's 13363.
Oh, 63, I'm sorry. Better put my glasses back on.
And 1349.
Yeah. Now be read a third time, reconsidered, finally adopted and signed by the mayor and clerk and corporate seal, fixed there too.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried.
And finally, I move, reconsideration, final adoption, I move that bylaws 13500, 13501, 13502 now be reconsidered, finally adopted, signed. 13502 now be reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the corporate seal fixed there, too.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving now to new business. We have, first of all, a motion to cancel the meeting of October 19, 2015. That is the meeting that's scheduled for the very night that the federal election will take place. Been moved and seconded. I imagine that probably you'll be busy, and having a council meeting in the midst of it will not be very convenient. So we will reschedule or move work in order to accomplish that. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Any other new business? Yes, councillor McNell.
Form would come through, and that, and I know that city staff put in some long hours and that, trying to get the services back up and running and that. And I think I'd like to say thank you publicly to the staff, if the department heads would pass that on to their members who are working during those trying times to keep the city safe and functioning.
Thank you, and I know that councillor, I appreciate councillor Volko, councillor Jordan, and councillor Dollywall were in it up to their ears while the rest of us were away, in order to deal with the day-to-day problems that occur when we take on an emergency like that. And I know that the three of them had issues they want to continue to discuss with staff and to review, and we'll be coming back as a result of that with recommendations on how we can do an even better job. But we're passing on our thanks to staff for what they did, and obviously, we're looking at our systems to see how we can improve. And I know over the next little while, we'll be looking to the three councillors who are here to give advice on those matters as to what they saw and what they know about it. And again, our staff can be of a lot of help in bringing up through the system the issues that they saw that we can prepare for if we have another incident like that, and I'm sure we will at some point have an incident like that. And in fact, we're preparing for potentially something even worse. So we want to, this is in a way a test, and I want to be sure that we recognize where we weren't adequate in regard to that test, and where we perform well, and make sure that we cover all of those areas. All right? And with that, a motion to adjourn is in order. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you very much, council. Thank you, staff, for tonight, and thank you to everyone who stayed with us.